You only sign in is only if you want to speak. Yep, I hear for government class. So at the end you'll get your, just come up here and have any coordinates to sign it, okay?
Like validating for our new.
Let's move out of executive session made by Mr. Groden and seconded by Mr. Vera. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. If everyone could please rise for the pledge to the flag and remain standing for a moment of silence. Gallagher.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic.
Um, I would like everyone to remain standing for a moment, um, for a moment of silence for a a retired personnel from Monticello Central School District, Elizabeth Kendall, who passed away last week. From the amount of teachers and administrators, a few that actually came up from Florida. Very much appreciated and all that she did for the school district and I just wanna read one paragraph from her obit, which I think sums her up pretty well. Elizabeth was a beautiful soul to know, her was to love her. Our lives have been forever touched by her loving kindness and will not be the same without her. So if everyone please bow their heads for a moment of silence. Thank you very much. If anyone please silence your electronic devices as needed. If anyone is here for participation in government. Um, any of the board members can sign your sheets at the end of the meeting. One of the things that needs to be filled out is who's running the meeting. My name is Timothy Crumley, the president of the Board of Education. And anybody at the end of the meeting can sign that piece of paper and you'll get credit for, uh, coming to a board meeting. Motion to move the agenda to the table made by Mrs. Holmes, seconded by Mr. Groden. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Dr. Evans, any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
There are none at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Motion to adopt the agenda as is, motion by Mr. Broden, seconded by Ms. Gallagher. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Approval of draft minutes, January fourth, two thousand twenty-four. Motion to approve the minutes made by Ms. Greco, seconded by Ms. Gallagher. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. This evening we are placed with a bless with Sophia for our student board member update. Mrs. Vandermark.
On dinner eleven, the entire student body of the high school had assembly with a guest speaker named Duncan Kirkwood. He discussed setting in which our goals. Last week, there was a field trip for approximately forty students, forty-five students to Hurleyville Art Center to celebrate the life of Martha Luther King Jr. They did activities with each other that hopefully sparked and inspired some students to their best. January region's exams are next week. The winter science and PE academy are going to the Rock, Rockhead, like from January's twenty-sixth to thirty. Incoming ninth grade orientation will be on the thirty-first and at six thirty PM to seven thirty PM.
Thank you very much, Ms. Vandermark. Any questions or comments from this gentleman? Thank you so much for giving us that report. Um, it's Greco.
Um, I'd like the motion that we accept the consent agenda. I like the motion that we accept the consent agenda F-one to M-two.
I have a second on that made by Ms. Holmes. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Thank you very much, Ms. Greco. Um, moving on from there, we have information reports and discussions or roundtable. Uh, Ms. Holmes.
I don't think I have anything to report.
Very much, Mr. Rivera. It's Riley. LaRusso.
I, um, wrestling season, very busy with wrestling season. I really, um, think it's wonderful that Mr. Jopper was able to have um, find a tournament on the weekends. Boys are and girls are going like every, just every weekend. I think it's great compared to last year. I hope that we are able to fund that in the budget this year. Hopefully it's gonna have enough money to do that wrestling.
Um, he did have in his, uh, report that he's working on his budget for next year, so.
But we have one thing out. Trying to think what else. I'm busy at work. Um, about it?
And Reggie's awesome.
Yes, Reggie, thank you for helping with my computer today. You're doing best. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. LaRusso. Mr. Groden, another report. Gallagher.
Um, just like to congratulate all the Alpine ski team as their season started today over at Bel Air. I wasn't able to make the race, but, um, Alexis Heinz, she came in first for the girls today and, um, I believe the boys was Sammy Ryan. And most of your top competitors were all from Monticello Central School District. So I just wanna say a big shout out to them. I'm pretty excited for them.
And very much, Mrs. Gallagher. Mrs. Greco?
No report.
Um, my report will be kind of short as well. I did stop in briefly last Thursday. Um, our architects BBS came to the district to, uh, take a walk around of, uh, the grounds and facilities and some upcoming projects that might be coming up. Um, so I did sit down with, uh, Mr. Lewis, Miss Phala, and a couple of the architects from BBS, um. Decent discussion for the short period of time I was there. Um, it'll be interesting to see how that kind of panned out. Um, and excited for what's coming in the future. Um, next week we do have, uh, Ms. Holmes, uh, pointed out when we're in executive session, we do have a special meeting um, regarding the evaluation of our superintendent at six o'clock here in the middle school. Um, that meeting essentially will go directly into executive session for the sole purpose of the evaluation of the superintendent. So if anybody's wondering why that's on the calendar, that's why that is, um, on there. And that'll be the only topic, um, covered during that meeting. Um, I think that pretty much concludes that. Uh, moving on from there, we have director reports. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding our directors' reports that are on, uh, on the agenda? And I was just telling Ms. Carlin, it was nice that, um, a couple of the, uh, things that used to be bulked up in curriculum and instruction were broken out a little bit. And those were very informative reports and thank your people for, uh, putting those together for us. Any questions or comments regarding director reports? So moving on to correspondence outcomes. None are listed this time, um, due to no public comment at the last meeting. And then we come to our policy committee memo. Dr. Evans.
Thank you, President Crumley. So I think I misspoke earlier when I said there's no amendments to the agenda, um, in looking at action item T-four. Uh, that really should be amended to be first reading of that policy. Okay, so that was a policy, uh, I know, policy committee members may recall that our last meeting, we had to pull it off the agenda. So, uh, that policy that's in there now is, uh, the most up-to-date version and the one that the policy committee uh, wrestled with for a few meetings. Uh, the essence of it was that there were some tweaks uh, that came through regulations and the New York State School Boards Association put out a model policy update. Uh, the policy committee reviewed it and quite a bit of discussion about it. Saw legal counsel, uh, our legal counsel added some language in there that they thought was most fitting. Uh, and this is now the, the tweaked policy as you see it. Uh, so, uh, in essence, what was, uh, being considered was whether or not private school students, uh, would be allowed to participate in extracurricular activities uh, that the school district offered is public students, it's public students. And ultimately, uh, the, the, and some other language in there as well. That's not the only thing, but uh, ultimately the committee decided that, uh, based on, uh, advisement from legal counsel that it was, uh, wisest not to extend that, uh, privilege. So that is one policy that the board is doing a first reading of. The other policy is the student eligibility policy. Uh, so this policy, uh, earlier in the school year, uh, Mr. Jasper and Dr. Furman, uh, raised some concerns that they had in reviewing the policy. I had received similar concerns from other, uh, parents, stakeholders over the years. And, uh, they created an ad hoc committee of staff members, coaches, and parents. I believe Ms. Jersey was on that committee uh, to review the eligibility policy and make any recommended changes that they thought would uh, not only, uh, require and expect, uh, academic performance of our athletes and that they represent us in athletic events. But also allow, uh, students who are struggling in school to stay connected to their programs and teams. Uh, and also, uh, to be more mindful of, you know, kind of the current state of affairs. So that if students, for example, were taking, uh, more challenging classes uh, that, uh, you know, really challenged them and it kind of put them on the bubble and, uh, you know, may have ultimately failed a course after two weeks because it was a really challenging course that they wouldn't be removed from a a, a team, uh, because of that reason. And we actually had a student who experienced that unfortunately back in the fall. So, uh, the committee, uh, reviewed other policies, uh, held several meetings and discussions and ultimately moved this policy forward and, uh, asked that the policy committee review and consider it to bring it to the full board. Uh, and the po- policy committee did so at its first meeting earlier this month. And, uh, that is, uh, the policy that you see in front of you. Some of the significant changes are that, uh, students who are failing up to two courses, uh, can still be eligible. However, if you are failing one or two courses, uh, you have to attend tutorial. Uh, previously, if you were failing one course, there was no tutorial requirement. But if you were failing two courses, you were ineligible and off the team. Uh, there was some grace period where you could attend tutorial and remain on the team. However, you were technically ineligible during that duration. Uh, and then anything beyond that, uh, there was no practice only eligible. So you see that's a new provision in there where you are failing uh, three or four courses, you still have to attend tutorial. You can't participate in games and major events, but you can still be a practicing member of the team. And ultimately, students who are failing five or more courses are ineligible and there's no opportunity for them to continue performing. Uh, the other major change is that the eligibility period, uh, has been moved from ten in school, uh, in session school days to fifteen. So previously it was, the list was pulled every two weeks. Now, in essence, it would be pulled every three weeks. So those are and there's some minor language changes around the appeals process. And otherwise. So I don't know if any, uh, policy committee members have anything to add to that, or if the board in general has any questions on either of those policies.
One second. So we're gonna pull T-four so we can change the verbiage on that?
Yeah, I'm gonna amend it.
Alright, so.
Yeah.
Any board members have any questions, comments, or concerns regarding anything to discuss about policy? Mr. Groden?
My concern with the policy is that having failed two classes out of five. Um, it's forty percent failing. I understand they can be on the bubble or they can be taking rigorous courses. My fervent view is that students are adhering to making Monticello better. Showing us the best they can do, putting forth all their effort. And if they have a hiccup and they slide past one course failing, I don't think that two is helping us. I don't think it's showing the best of Monticello. I think lower than eighty percent, we get into the precipitous slope. Um, two courses, if you're failing, you need to go and you need to get extra help. I can understand a course, eighty percent. But once you go into sixty percent and that's still representing Monticello, I don't see it as us reinforcing how well our students can perform and giving them that extra push to stay on their books and also compete at a high level.
Yes, LaRusso.
I do believe since COVID, our children have struggled and we're still seeing them struggle currently. And I'm giving them a little bit of grace right now is what our students need. And I believe this policy is giving our students some grace. And I, I do understand we're comfortable, Mr. Broden, but we need to show some grace. And this policy is giving our children the opportunity. And I don't, I, I have faith that they're going to do better. It will be attended children, which is gonna help them overall and the world, you need to be well-rounded and sports helps children be well-rounded. So does the theater help children and we're given the opportunity they need right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. LaRusso. Yes, Mrs. Riley.
I wanna speak to the fact that this provides students with accountability when it comes to attending an hour tutorials on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday. I think that's key to getting them the extra support they need. They might have a school day where they have maybe just a lunch of that uh, to do their, their classwork and then they have games somewhere or practices somewhere and, and I just um, I, I like the aspect of it that there is that extra support and it's required for them to stay on a sport or a club that they're interested in. And then, um, in addition, I like the fact that it's it's also saying that you may not be able to participate in the games, but you can still participate, practice. And that way you're able, or if you're on the play, you can, can attend is part of the game still. Um, but then there's still that carrot there to say, but in order to play in a game, you're gonna have to improve your grades. So I do think that it's, uh, it's worthwhile to try. Thanks.
Right, um. I kind of echo the sentiments of Ms. LaRusso and Mrs. Riley. Um, I understand where Mr. Groden's coming from, but I think the kids that are gonna be doing well and are gonna be averaging a ninety-five throughout the school year are gonna average a ninety-five throughout the school year. I think we need to take in consideration the kids that maybe you're running at that forty, fifty percent and maybe this will make them wanna be at that fifty, sixty. And if we can grab those kids and get them to want to, instead of failing four classes, oh, I can fail two classes and still play? Well, now they're only failing two instead of four. So I think you still need to kind of have something to bring those kids up that might wanna participate in sports. Um, I think your concerns are fully heard, Mr. Groden. But at the same time, um, I think you also need to take the underperforming students and, like Mrs. Riley said, give them that chance to, to do it, feel good about themselves for doing it and hope that they keep doing it and do it better and better each day that they so that's my two cents on that. Yes, Mr. Groden?
I understand that. I understand. I'm trying to stave off the effects of long COVID off of the district. Um, we want students that are well-grounded. You put responsibility on their shoulders. That's how we get this. If it is that they fail one course, I can see them being on the team. Two courses? Or we're trying to do, see what my apprehension is, is joining the least of family and it is one of the least favorite things I've ever seen. At least they're not failing five. At least they're not failing four. At least, look, if they're failing two courses or more, then yeah. You know, socially, it's great. Be part of the team, but you're not representing us on the field. You get your butt over the eighty bump. You're only failing a course? Then do it. I'm not saying zero tolerance, but I'm saying, yeah, one course, two courses. Now you're really letting it slide. You're letting forty percent of you fail. So you get the practice, you get your social connection, you're still part of the team, you're not dropped from the team. Three sport, three, three things you're failing, sixty percent of, of your academic, you're failing, you gotta go. That's just my thing. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Understood. Alright, any other questions or comments regarding, uh, the policy committee?
Yes, Miss Riley.
I would like to speak on policy seventeen forty.
One second. Which is actually going to be the first reading, so we will have a second reading at the next meeting.
Up with the opportunity of the first reading. Uh, this would be the third page. So it even says page three at the bottom. And this is talking about prohibited use. So this is referring to the policy relationship with non-public schools and it's under instructional computer hardware and software alone. So under that um, area, it's talking about prohibited use. So it says no instructional computer hardware or software programs loan by district may be used for any non-sectarian, religious, and so on. So during the policy discussions, I understand this to be something from the state as far as recent, just to say we're not, we're going to make sure that none of the computer hardware, software that the private schools are using can have any religious content on it. Uh, so I just wanna be clear with that part of it in the policy. Even though it's as for New York State myself, I, I think it's an infringement on the rights of students for their free speech. So I just thought I would just put that out there that I look at that and I and that that doesn't look, uh, like something constitutional, yet this is what our state is telling us that they'd like us to do. That's clear. That's there with one thing. But thank you.
I have a question. Did we just? Can we just go over the policy about, uh, students' freedom of expression, religious expression? Yes. So how is? That doesn't make, it doesn't correlate well with this, then.
So that policy was about public school students and staff members, there's provisions there for staff members too, being able to have religious expression in schools. This is about, uh, the section that Ms. Riley points out is about district purchase hardware, software and its utilization. So in other words, the policy that was recently adopted, I think it was maybe in December, um, about, you know, allowing students and staff members to, you know, express them, express their religious beliefs, however, not in like an overly you know, overt manner that, you know, might be proselytizing people. What this is referring to is the district loans materials to, to private schools, systems and state ed, uh, state laws and, uh, state education department regulations. Those materials cannot be used to promote religious ideas. So that's the, kind of the difference between so in other words, we, the old, the policy that you referred to that we just adopted was if students were engaging in prayer. We, administration or school staff can do nothing to interfere with that. But district provided materials, resources can't be used to promote a particular religion. That's what this is in, in private schools and public schools, whatever. Just reasserting it for, uh, private school use in here.
You're still allowed to believe what you wanna believe, just this the public-funded computer that we're giving to a private school can't be used to promote whatever said religion might be at that private school. Whether it be Jewish, Christian, Muslim, or any other.
I understand what you're saying. If it's, if, if it's what you're saying.
But if social studies was talking about, um, you know, medieval Europe and they were talking about, uh, you know, Protestant and Catholic and the religious, um, you know, ongoings of Europe at that time, that would be perfectly fine. It's just promoting, you're promoting whatever religion that school might be associated with to push forward your agenda in that manner on publicly funded property. No. You can still have your say or whatever. You just can't do it on our computer.
But the thing is, I don't see where it says promote. It just says non-sectarian religions. So it, it doesn't say exactly what I believe you're saying is that you're not to use this equipment if you're promoting a religion. It doesn't say promoting, it just says it's used for non-sectarian religions. So it could be just a student that happens to have their their iPad. And I mean, this is for non-public schools, but let's just say that this will one day encompass public schools as well. This is pertaining to not public. Yeah, but that's just for that. Don't this up here?
The reason it says used is because it can't be used, for example, uh, by say, private school staff to say, alright, let's open up your laptops and we're going to read from this whatever holy book it is, because we're going to learn more about this particular part of our religious belief. That's what it means by used.
Which I believe was kind of covered in the policy committee meeting, which is why most private schools that are adjoined with a particular religion don't actually get hardware such as computers and programs from districts. They mostly rely on those monies for textbooks and stuff because they are also aware of New York State rules. And they also don't wanna get dinged on that.
And I would say that's true. Very few private schools are using any of that money for hardware or software. They can transfer it to textbooks. So I understand all that, but I don't see the promotion. That's all. When I look through the eight bullet points, there are promotion for certain things, which is inappropriate material. But let's just say for number four, it says any use that is religious in nature or content. It doesn't specifically say for the promotion of religious material. In my view, what I'm reading here, it just says prohibited use. No computer or hardware, software programs loan by district may be used for this non-sectarian religious content. Any use that is religious nature or content. I'm, I'm just saying that the state is telling us this is what we need to change on our policy. That's new for this policy. We didn't have that before. Now we're having it state telling us this is what we need to do. I'm saying, I don't think that sounds like a student in a private school is getting their free speech. It's like we get our free speech at a public school. And that perhaps in the future, this is gonna be for public schools as well. The public school iPads, when you bring home, you can't search up the spiritual leader of any kind because you'll get dinged or you'll, you'll get canceled because they'll have it on the, on the list of things you can't go on. I, we don't even need to get there because this is not pertaining to that. This is just the private schools. But my problem with this, even though New York State is saying this is what we are to do, my problem with it is it doesn't seem right. It's not free speech. And so that's all I'm saying. That's all I wanted to bring to light. That I don't agree with it.
I understand.
All that New York State is saying.
I understand your point.
Thank you.
Do we know how many private schools make laptops or hardware?
Or art district?
In our district? Our district.
We got, we got.
I'm just curious if that you know, if they, if they take any at all. In the time that I've been here, very few, and they're not taking our existing hardware and software and borrowing it. They get a per student allocation that they can buy hardware and software, but it's considered on loan because we're the parent district. And, and they, most of that money is used for textbooks.
Any other questions or comments for policy, Mrs.?
I will think it's important to kind of remember that there's a chain like religious and religion. And so in that we're like, one against, I would say is more academic and like be more spiritually based. So like people still take world religion classes. That's history. So it's not whereas, so they are different things. And so when we view them and we look at the policy, but we, when educational policy set up in that way with church at stake, like they're different things. And so how like one still allows the study of such things, but maybe not the like promoting or prophesizing of something, maybe is a way, different ways to see those things. And like, so then they have to be evaluated and sometimes it's case by case, but other times the lines are more clear. I would say overall.
You good on policy? Thank you very much, everybody. Uh, Dr. Evans, capital project update.
Yes, thank you, President Crumley. As was mentioned earlier, uh, BBS architects were here last week. Uh, they reviewed the facilities with Ms. Bayla, uh, Mr. Lewis and had a discussion with Mr. Crumley as well to prepare for uh, a potential capital br- cap- capital improvement project referendum, hopefully later this spring. Um, I, I met earlier today with Ms. Bayla and Mr. Lewis about some of the items that were reviewed, obviously uh, the athletic fields in front of, on the Route forty-two side of the high school called Rock Back, if what you will. Um, the uh interior classrooms at Chase and Rutherford, uh primarily to uh uh, I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry, Cook and Rutherford, thank you. Uh, primarily to eliminate those storefront windows and then redesign the classrooms within them. Um, looking at the drainage around the building of Rutherford and the athletic fields behind it uh, that really struggles with drainage when it's wet. Uh, I'm leaving any out. And yeah, those are the big ones. Now there was a review and consideration of Saint John Street, uh, facade and the sopits and the bishop. That would come at a significant cost. So uh, we don't know yet, uh, you know, exactly how much we're looking at in a potential project. And we don't know if that would be uh really pushing that number uh too high for what we could afford in our budget. So there's more to come on that. Um, what I would like to get from those of you who are on the capital project committee is a possible tentative meeting date that I can go back to DBS and say, hey, would you be able to meet on such and such a date and time, like February eighth? And add that pencil down. So February eighth could work. I would have certainly expected they would be ready by that. Um, I think if possible and available, if something sooner than that, it'd be preferred by me just because I want to make sure we stay on track with having a spring bowl, but I will do what the way the committee directed.
Oh, I just picked that number in my pre-discussion with Lisa. Okay. So you think sooner than that would be safe to do?
Well, I, I think I haven't heard back from BBS yet about when they think they would be ready. I plan on following up with them tomorrow with a phone call.
The week prior to that, on the first, we have board meeting.
Budget committee meeting on the thirtieth.
And the first would also be a policy committee meeting, correct? Correct? But next week would be too early. I would agree. So what about the thirtieth?
So the budget, well, we did this before, didn't we?
What's that?
We did a double header. Budget is Tim, Helen, Todd and Jen.
No, that's capital.
Oh, okay.
Budget is Tim, Helen and Ashley. So you'd already have two people there.
Great. And, and capital is Tim, Helen, Todd and Jen.
Yes.
Right?
What day is that?
That is Tuesday, January thirtieth. So that's at five.
So the question would be then with
His six word.
Would Todd and Jen be able to do the thirtieth at six? I don't make that face. Come on.
Tuesday thirty. Yep.
That's a yes?
Yep.
Bring it home, Jen. Got two weeks.
Again, this is, you know, if BBS thinks they'll be ready by then, I just want to, you know, make sure we stay on track.
It's trying to shoe horn them into making decisions. So tentatively, you might be okay. And Helen would already be on for the budget, so I'm assuming she would be okay. So six o'clock on the thirtieth would also be a capital project committee.
So we need the district office and I'll confirm with the
Would you be able to more comfortably attend by Zoom, Jen?
I, last time I attended one meeting by Zoom was definitely.
Very well.
I'm not interested in that. Thank you though.
All right. So let me see what they're available. You know, they may.
Yeah, I can make it work. I just have to get some childcare arranged for people.
Six P M. Cause uh budget was at five?
Budget's at five. So BBS also uh gave us an updated scope for task four. Uh, this is kind of the remaining of the fifty-four million dollar capital project. And what we're looking at for the remaining uh dollars there is a renovation of the, of five storefront window classrooms at Chase Elementary School. Building drainage at Rutherford Elementary School, uh primarily root uh work. And then parking lot reconstruction and drainage at Monticello High School by the one hundred wing. So that that parking lot that's right next to the renovated wing, you've been in there, you see it's kind of rough and it's in need of some attention. That would uh fulfill task four. And finally, uh renovation continues at one eleven and one thirteen. They have poured the concrete floor and that has dried. They've also uh constructed the interior dividing wall. Um, and work continues on that. And uh we believe that uh those rooms should be open for stu- student and staff use, hopefully by the end of February, if not March. I'll keep you up.
Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. Any questions or comments for um capital project update? Yep. Moving on from there, we have upcoming events. Justice Larissa.
That was changed.
Yeah.
Four, two meeting?
Yeah. Where, where are you?
Did we change it too?
I thought we decided just to have the one. Right? Sixteen? So there's no meeting on the second.
And no policy on the second.
No, oh, yeah. Thank you.
So what meeting is that? I'm sorry.
Four, two, twenty-four.
So there's no meeting on the second. Policy on April sixteen.
Yeah.
So also has the budget committee meeting on two, one prior to the regular P O.
Yeah, so that needs to be changed too. So that's January thirtieth. Cause there was a conflict in policy. So the budget committee meeting is on
January one thirty five. I can do. Get that, Janet?
So instead of two, one, it's on one thirty.
Yeah.
And that's at five, right?
Yeah. Sweet. So we're spurred away on upcoming events. Thank you very much. Um, community events, we have a uh nice article from the Democrat. Um, Janet, any questions or comments from the public?
There's one signed up. Um, Dan, I'm sorry, I can't read your thing. From Brumba and it's regarding
Religious exemption.
On religious exemption.
Um, just give me a second to uh read my piece. Board of Education recognized the value of public comment on educational issues and matters of public interest. In order to permit the fair and orderly expression of public comment, the following rules shall govern and will be administered by the presiding officer. Please note, the first public comment period of forty-five minutes maximum duration will be at the beginning of the meeting and a period of fifteen minutes maximum at the end of the meeting. Either period may be extended by majority vote on the board. Neither public comment period is a time for public discussion. If necessary, the community member will be contacted for follow-up. If you wish to speak, place your name, email, indoor address and telephone number on the sign-in list indicating the topic of your comments. Prior to making your comments, state your name for the record. Identify any group or organization you represent. Comments are limited to three minutes or less per speaker. Speaker may not yield his or her time to another speaker in order to extend the time for comment. No speaker may comment on or identify any particular student, employee by name, position or situation in his or her comments. All comments are to be directed to the board president or designate. Handouts and or petitions are to be given only to the board president for distribution to the board. The board will receive and consider all written comments. A memo will be placed on the agenda on the next meeting under information, reports, discussions to keep the board informed of the outcomes. It will be titled correspondence outcomes. That will be a public document. Now it's you, sir. Uh, if you could please stand and just come, until we can pick you up on the microphone as well.
In, in Brumba, um with no organization. Uh, just wanted to uh amend Ms. Riley there for speaking out against uh policy. I do uh I do agree, uh, there's some constitutionality concerns. Um, I don't think it's fair for this board to condemn a student from possibly looking into or learning who God is to them um and telling them what they can and cannot do uh as far as their religious uh beliefs go. I don't believe unless this board can provide you plenty of information that this board prohibits the use of looking up Darwinism or the theory of evolution or the Big Bang Theory as any uh access points prohibit any of the students from having. So um, if this board feels fit to condemn a student from looking up their own beliefs or finding God in their life, then the same exemption should be applied to those theories to prohibit any student from having access to those or any of the school controlled devices as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brumba. Is anybody else signed up? Janet? Uh, yes, you may.
Gabby Brumba. I can talk.
Yes, ma'am.
So, um, for the eligibility policy, um, honestly, I don't think I feel like if you're failing for the one class, I don't think there should be any opportunity, like students like me, I focus on my work a lot. I do track and field, I do cross country. And I make sure my grades are up to date. And I feel like just having other students have the opportunity to fix things. I feel like it's a little convenient towards them. I just feel like they should be able to get their work done, do all that. I'm out to school and I see students going to tutorial, but they're not actually doing tutorial. They're hanging around the bathroom, smoking, vaping, not doing anything. And I feel like that's unfair. They should not be allowed to do any sports at all for that reasoning. And I see kids in detention talking on their phones, not doing anything. And I feel like that should be resolved as well. Um tension should be strict. You're not allowed to do anything. You're in there for a reason. You skipped class, you smoked, all that. Um, but yeah.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brumbo. Thank you very much, Janet. Um moving on from questions, comments from the public, Dr. Evans, superintendent updating information.
Thank you, President Crumley. So uh, the big news this week is obviously the governor has released uh her uh budget proposals for the upcoming year. Uh, and uh the state aid, uh, most importantly for this district are her uh proposals for state aid. Uh, just a reminder for the board and the public, uh roughly half of our budget is funded by uh state aid. So as, as that goes, uh, it certainly impacts our budget. So uh, her proposed increase is overall statewide, a two point four percent increase for the upcoming year. Uh, this is the lowest year-to-year proposed increase of her tenure and uh below the current consumer price index of three point nine percent. So it is considerably lower than the rate of inflation. Uh, there are a couple of uh changes that she is proposing in uh the process as to how she arrived at that state aid number. First, uh, is to look at a multi-year average of inflation rather than a twelve-month inflation. So that number I gave you, the three point nine percent, that's the actual twelve-month inflation rate. Uh, she is proposing a different calculus, which is let's look over multiple years with the average inflation rate is. Uh, so in other words, taking into account uh pre-inflation numbers, if you will. The second, and perhaps more insidious piece, is that she's proposing to eliminate the whole harmless provision, state aid. What hold harmless uh has done for school districts for maybe thirty years now? Basically, you can't, your foundation aid would not be reduced over the next year. So in other words, if, if you were at this plat- at this amount for foundation aid, let's say thirty-nine million dollars, regardless of what the changes were to your calculus, you would still be at thirty-nine million the next year. Uh, and regardless of how that formula got applied. So she's proposing to eliminate that. What that, what those changes mean for our district is we would have a point six percent reduction in foundation aid, uh, which is about two hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars less than what we received last year. When we add in all of our expense-driven aids, uh, we would have a net increase in overall aid of point two five percent. Uh, so that's roughly uh new money of about a hundred twenty-seven, a hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars. So uh, before the meeting, it was, it was too late to get it into board docs, but I emailed the board of it. Uh, the runs, as they're known, for all the districts in Sullivan County. Uh, we don't have a cleaner document as of this date, but uh we're on this list and you can see not only our numbers, but also how they fare across the county. Uh, so we'll uh discuss, we'll certainly keep this in mind as we develop our budgets. Uh, we'll talk more about uh budget strategy with the board budget committee when it meets on Tuesday, January thirtieth. Uh, tonight, the board uh has appointed a new administrator in our district. That's Ms. Laura Zanrusia. Ms. Zanrusia, welcome. Zanrusia is our new director of secondary education. She comes to us, comes to us with a wealth of experience as a curriculum director and a secondary principal. Welcome, Ms. Zanrusia. We look forward to working. Uh, and we've also recently posted the high school principal uh vacancy across different internet platforms. Uh, we plan on beginning screening interviews in late February, uh with the intention of having a new principal in place by July first. Uh, we're meeting next week with the uh New York State Education Educator Workforce Development Hub uh on the, the next steps in the registered apprenticeship program. I'm pleased to share with the board that Sullivan Boasys has created a COSER agreement for that program as a number of uh fellow of other districts of the county are also interested in creating this. That's good news because that means costs affiliated with it are achievable. Uh, so we would uh receive uh about half of that money back. An update on snow days, cause we used a couple this week. Um, and uh tomorrow is looking uh dodgy, I guess. Uh, we have six emergency closure days remaining. Uh, we intend on, uh, we don't intend on using them, but if we have to use them. Uh, and then we run out of days and we have to do another emergency closure after that, we would switch to remote instruction. So we'll be certainly communicating that with the board and the community, uh, should we near that, uh, end of the, the snow day allotment. And, uh, just a reminder, uh, I have superintendent's office hours coming up. The next one is on February first from eight thirty to ten thirty A M. And I have other dates listed there. They're on our website and I had one yesterday afternoon, uh, from four thirty to six thirty P M. So if a particular time doesn't work for you, I try to flex them. Throughout the year to, to meet everyone's schedule. That's the report for the season.
Thank you very much, Dr. Evans.
So. At a whim, that can just be downgraded.
So this is her proposed budget, so it would go through an act of the legislature. So the legislature for the next, uh, two plus months. There'll be negotiations between the Assembly, the Senate and the Governor about changes in. The state aid funding law that would eliminate that provision. That would go along with the package. In order for, for, let's say, our district to receive what she's proposing, they, they would have to eliminate that provision. So it's not written in the Constitution, it's really an act of law. Of law to change.
And we could be in serious trouble.
Um, if. There's other districts that are going to be in worse trouble. But it would, uh, it would be, uh. It would be uncomfortable. We'd have to have some serious discussions about programs. Um, we would have to, uh, probably eliminate programs and or raise taxes and or use, uh, fund balance to help offset. That difference.
And we're gonna know this by what date?
Uh, by April first, according to the Constitution. Um, sometimes it goes longer than that, sometime, oh, I shouldn't say sometimes it goes. Always, but April first is by law what, uh, the, the state has to set up budget.
By that point in time, we're gonna know exactly how uncomfortable. Yeah.
Right. Yeah, well, when they, when they manage to get around to it.
Yeah, but what we would have to do, I think by April twentieth, maybe. It's on the calendar when we adopt a budget.
Right.
We'll have to know for sure by then. So we'll start building a budget with. We'll be using the governor's numbers to initiate the budget process. Board committee, the, the budget committee will say. Alright, here's how, you know. What the budget number should look like, you know, how much of an increase in the budget we wanna, wanna have. How much, uh, new monies and taxes do we wanna raise? How much fund balance might we want to use to help offset these costs? So those are all discussions that the board's gonna be undertaking over the next several months.
And the presentations will start fairly shortly from the principals bringing forward their budgets, uh, departments bringing forward their budgets. And things of that nature, if you remember from last year. Pretty much from what, February through, um, about every meeting, we have one or two presentations from different departments to present their budgets.
We'll have some amount of time between. Hopefully, between when the budget is established by the legislature and the governor, you know, when they approve a budget. And when we actually have to adopt a budget and it gets published in the papers. It's printed out the balance.
I mean, every, the reality is, I mean, it's not looking good whatsoever. That's the reality.
Not as good as it's been in recent years. It's not as bad as what other districts are facing. But, um. Would we like to see, uh, education better funded? Yes.
Thank you.
We have semi expect.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, we, we expected this. You recall, um, you know, the numbers I shared with you in December that state education department put out. Didn't look terribly pleasing, uh. What the governor has done is, is gone below that.
Any other questions or comments for, uh, Dr. Evans? Okay, so moving on, Assistant Superintendent for Business, um, Ms. Phaila.
Thank you, President Crum. May you have the budget stars, I don't know who can hear. Claims auto to report in school lunch profit and loss for the month of November. I have two, um, agreements that I'm asking the board to approve this evening. One is, um, for handle with care. We have a recently retired administrator who is a certified trainer. And until we can get another person trained. Um, he's willing to train some of our security staff who have not been trained, so. Um, it's an as-needed basis. That contract, um, the next one, Janet shouldn't say placeholder, if you can take that off. It's an administrative services agreement for thirty-two fourteen student suspension hearings. Again, we have a retired administrator who is trained, knows how to do those, and again, would be as needed if, um. You know, um, our current administration is not able to handle.
Comments for Lisa? Yes, Mr. Riley?
It might be later on, but it's about, um, the participation in the school lunches. Not on here. Wasn't profit loss, it was somewhere else in here talked about. Okay, so it talks about, I believe it was K L R has eighty percent participation, which was similar to what I saw in the past. They had the highest of all the schools and then the high school had the lowest of all schools. That was consistent. And that's at about fifty percent and then the other schools are in the sixties.
Right.
Okay, is that? What it was like last year at this time? I think that there hasn't been much change there from what I can tell.
In the elementary schools, not so much.
Okay.
They, they remained pretty much the same. You'll see some months it fluctuates. Um, November is. September is usually low because the new school year and elementary parents send in their lunch and then. They get tired of doing that and see the numbers go up. Um, but the one number that has consistently increased is the high school. When I first got here, that was below thirty percent participation, so that has been received.
Thank you.
Questions, comments for Assistant Superintendent? Thank you very much, Mrs. Phaila. Uh, moving on to Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. This is Carlin.
Thank you, President Crumley. I only have one thing to, for tonight, and that's a business contract, um, for a consultant. But I also wanted to take this time to welcome Mrs. Zanrusia as well and to thank Mr. Fessinger for coming tonight to support her. So, welcome.
Questions or comments for Ms. Carlin? Thank you so much. Uh, moving on to action items, I'm just gonna ask ahead of time, um. Would we like to pull for, um, singular consideration either T four or T five?
T five.
You want T five pulled?
I'll pull, I'll T four as well.
Very well. Well, T four was getting pulled anyways, but.
T four was gonna be amended.
We need to amend it and pull it.
So now we don't wanna, we just wanna.
Not pull, we need to pull it out for.
Yeah.
Not put it in the group.
Okay.
But we've now the group, yeah, we would have T one through T three and then T four, I'm sorry, T six through T eight. And then T four and T five would just be voted on singularly. With an amendment to T four. So you wanna do the group first?
Yeah. Okay. I make a motion that we, uh. A pretty much items, T one, their T three and T six through T eight as a group.
I have a second on that, made by Mrs. Russo, any discussion? All in favor? So ordered.
A motion that we approve action items, T one to T three and T six to T eight.
Second on that, made by, um, Mrs. Rivera. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered.
A motion that we amend action item T four to read first reading and adoption policy one seven zero four.
Just first reading.
Yeah, I was just gonna read the whole thing.
Yeah, but we're not adopting, so you have to amend it to just say first reading of seventeen forty.
So I motion that we amended to say first reading, policy one seven four zero relations with non-public schools.
I have a second on that by Ms. Rivera. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered.
A motion that we approve the first reading of policy number one seven four zero relations with non-public schools.
I have a second on that, made by Ms. Holmes. Any discussion? Check, we've already had, all in favor? Any opposed? So that's four and four, so that would be a, doesn't carry. Next.
I, um, motion that we approve action item T five.
I have a second on that. Made by Ms. Holmes. Any discussion? We've already had it, all in favor? Any opposed? Just tied in one. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Ms. Greco. Uh, moving on to closing a meeting, correspondence, um. None listed at this time. Janet, any questions or comments from the public?
No.
None at this time. Uh, that brings, oh. Anybody on the board can sign your, uh, participation in government paperwork. Motion to adjourn. Made by Ms. Holmes, seconded by, seconded by. Mrs. Gallagher, any discussion? All in favor? Don't order. Thank you very much, everybody.